All the committee of the whole meeting to corner, Mrs. Kellin is not here, so Kellin join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone recording the meeting? Thank you. And I believe we are up to the role.
Mrs. Herentz. Mr. Hurst.
Here.
Mrs. Kinnon.
Here.
Mrs. Phillips.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Shippers. Mrs. Kellin. Mrs. Torres.
Here.
Mrs. Savinski.
Here.
Six minutes.
Just want to welcome everybody to a committee of the whole meeting tonight and go over the list of upcoming meeting dates. There will be a finance and facilities workshop here in committee boardroom this Wednesday, November 12th at 5:00. There is a board of school directors meeting November 17th at 6:00 in this room. The school board reorganization meeting will be December 2nd at 6:00 also in this room. And there's a curriculum workshop on December 3rd at 5:00 p.m. also in this room. Let's see, we're up to public comment. Okay. We're up to the public comment section of the meeting. I will read the information about public comment, just in case there is anyone. Public comment will be welcomed during this time in the meeting as indicated on the agenda pursuant to Section 710.1 of the Sunshine Act. Members of the public wishing to speak during public comment will be asked to state their full name. As stated in school board policy 903, all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question individual board members, district employees, students, or community members. The public comment agenda item is not a time for dialogue with the board. Although the board president may respond or request another board member or administrator to respond, generally the board will simply listen to comments and thereafter determine when and how to address such comments as deemed appropriate. Participants are permitted three minutes to address the board. Is there any public comment for tonight? Okay. Great. Okay, moving on then, and I think we are moving on to routine approvals, which would be the minutes. So. It's here, so. Yeah. Okay, that's the one. It is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following minutes. The October 6, 2025 Board of School Directors Meeting Minutes.
So many.
Is that good?
Is there any discussion? I actually had a comment. I think that there are some incorrect dates in the minutes.
Okay.
Under the facilities report, unless this is from a previous year, it says the workshop was on December 10th. I think they need to be moved on to October.
October.
October. Yeah. And then there's also, under the finance section, it also they met in December. I think that also probably should be October, so.
I think that tells me a little faster.
Yes, right, right. A little faster. So I think that was the only. But I don't think it was October or November 10th. Or, I mean, well, maybe the. October 10th was a Friday. Okay.
Yeah, we met on the 15th.
Okay, so it's probably just an incorrect date in total. Okay.
Ironically, we're reporting tonight on the October 15th meeting, so it wouldn't have been in the minutes from the last minutes.
Right. So if, I'm not sure when that's from. Right.
So I don't think it's in front of the October 15th.
Oh, so it could have been a.
There was a finance and facilities meeting on September 10th at 5:00.
So it must have been September.
Yes.
Yes. Right. So I think we can approve the minutes as adjusted. And that's all by voice vote. So all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. And I think we are now up to committee reports. And let's see, oh, I have curriculum, so. So I will do the curriculum update. Our last meeting was held on September 24th, where we covered the junior senior high school restructuring. As I mentioned earlier, our next meeting is December 3 at 5:00. We'll be covering communications and technology. And we will have another one in January with the date yet to be determined. We're going to focus then on looking at our assessment data in preparation for some of our strategic planning sessions, which will happen later in 2026. Tonight, Dr. Hauck and Dr. Woodard will be reviewing the program of studies and their for the potential approval at our board meeting on November 17th. That is it for curriculum. Facilities, Mrs. Phillips.
Thank you. We had facilities and finance workshop on October 15th here in the boardroom. Mr. Kevin Sully gave us an update on the Flannery Field Phase 2 project. As of right now, the project is on schedule, figures crossed whether it does or not do anything. The retaining wall along the baseball field has been completed and is now being backfilled. And as a result, we are able to move on to other aspects of the baseball field, hopefully the dugout soon. The new field house is underway and it's showing significant progress. Mike took me up there the other week and walked me through. It looks really, it looks really nice. So they are definitely moving the, I guess, the next phase is putting the trusses on top. So. Let's see what else. The other thing that's making great progress is something that I know Mr. Boyer loves is the ticket booth entrance, which is going to be the term style. That looked really well, that looked really nice as well. And I believe that the fence is going out for the girls softball to define a real, I did not know that, a true home run space, whereas the current fence does not justify that home run, home run space. So hopefully that helps the girls out with that. Other than that, everything looks to be moving along accordingly. I know the board was giving the plans in regards to the field house and our updates on the October 24th. Did you get that? Because I know originally we were looking for this as well.
Yeah, thank you.
So, but I will say I was, I was given a tour of the building. It looks really, it was really nice. Also, at our previous workshops, some of the board had asked for a review to see the cost of adding a sanitary line as well as a bathroom of the baseball field. And Mr. Kevin Sully came back with an estimate, and unfortunately it was around $300,000. So that would probably be something down the road. Mr. Kevin Sully also gave us an update on vandalism at the newly renovated rec playground, and unfortunately there has been six cases since it's been opened. And at this point, we have unfortunately made the difficult decision to close the playground for the public. Mr. Kevin Sully also reviewed the HVAC replacement for the IT server and the fire alarm loop replacement at the junior senior high school. He also included projected costs based on cost source pricing. And the projected cost for the fire alarm loop is $20,924. And for the HVAC replacement, it is $16,170. And then our next workshop is actually this Wednesday, November 12th here at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Moving on to next committee is finance, Mr. Shippers.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add to Melissa's great report is we also reviewed in the new cycles, the renderings for the new security entrance.
Yes, thank you.
Which is pretty cool.
Yes.
There's a couple of different possibilities which were cited at show before, but one of them, Mr. Kevin Sully says it's time to look at them, but there's some, some really good options. So in relation to all those wonderful projects, we studied various capital needs in our budget for getting able to cover those costs. We looked at the implications of the ongoing budget impasse in Pennsylvania. Fortunately, you know, you read in the newspaper, there's a lot of school systems that are in severe distress over that. We're in really good shape thanks in large part to our great finance team here for managing the budget. We're not in a situation where it's a crisis yet, but we're continuing obviously to monitor what's happening at the, at the state level, but we do have enough reserve cash to be able to meet all of our obligations. We're in early innings of our next budget cycle, and so we talked and reviewed budget and potential tax implications there. And, and that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Herentz, I'm not here for policy. I don't know if there's any updates specifically on that.
Just that those overviews were shared with the board during the Friday update. So should there be any discussion, we can have that next Monday, but we'd like to go through the first one.
I think that concludes all of the committee updates, so I will turn it over to Dr. Hauck.
Oh, sorry, I have a little bit of update that I missed last time.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
The last meeting was on October 22nd, and the next meeting is December 11th for the reorganization. They reviewed updates to the welding facility due to ventilation problems. And they discussed tuition rates for CBL, which their tuition for Class A was $6,785. And the median costs were between $5,400 and $6,000, which resulted in consideration for lower tuition costs for CBL training. There is congratulations in order for 11 collective students from YO entering the National Technical Honor Society. And BCTC also received an ad homage table, which they're very proud of. The smart program, dental program, health occupation, sports medicine are all sharing the table to learn how to connect what they know in the classroom. And that's all I have for now.
Great, interesting. Exciting. Thank you. So I think that concludes all the updates, and so we'll turn it over to Dr. Woodard and Dr. Hauck for the junior senior high school program of studies.
I will. All right, perfect. All right, Dr. Hauck and I are going to just go through some of the more significant changes to the program of studies for the '26, '27 school year. Let's see if I can make this to place. There we go. And we feel like we've been talking about this with the obvious changes with the middle level and seventh and eighth grade, but it will all be documented in the program of studies. That document will be shared with you in this Friday's update, but these are the highlights of the changes, both at the middle level, seventh and eighth grade, again, which we talked about quite a bit, but then also at the high school, there are some new courses and things to celebrate. So we'll go through just a few of those. Dr. Hauck, if you want to.
Sure. So specific to the seventh and eighth grade, we've talked about extending the time for math and ELA, which is a big push for these updates. So math seven and accelerated pre-algebra are going to be 12 times per cycle. So that will be together too, that will be, we would consider sort of a block style. Math eight and accelerated algebra, which are eighth grade offerings, they will meet nine times per cycle. So they will get a block one day and then 40 minutes the next day, and then a block the following day, which will add up to the nine times per cycle. ELA is the same, seventh grade ELA and accelerated English will meet 12 times. Another change in that is that the reading and the writing will be integrated in one course, rather than having an English class maybe at the beginning of the day and a writing course at the end of the day. It will be taught by the same teacher in that same chunk of time. The academic and accelerated English eight, same thing, kind of on the opposite schedule of math. So when math has the block, ELA has the 40 minutes, and then the next day, ELA will have the block and math will have the 40 minutes. Science and social studies, we did talk about the academic and the advanced sections of science and social studies for seventh, eighth will no longer be offered. We will have science and social studies grade seven and science and social studies grade eight that all students will receive. Moral language, the change is that Spanish will be offered beginning in grade eight. Health and physical education, it will be taught in seventh and eighth grade, which amounts to instead of 45 days, it will now be 60 days across two grade levels. So whereas before it was only in eighth grade, it will now be taught in seventh and eighth grade. So we do have to just adjust that curriculum a little bit over the, over the two-year span. The quarter courses, in seventh grade, we will be adding another course instead of the exploring technology. It will be called next gen literacy. And this is going to be a seventh grade work course. So in that course, it's going to be research-based, so helping seventh graders really understand how to conduct research, pulling in some AI in that course, which I'm really excited for because just talking to them about how to use AI appropriately and for the benefits that we know can provide, so. Advisory will be taught in seventh and eighth grade now, so three times per cycle. Both grades will get that. It will, every other day with health and PE. That is a change. It was only in seventh grade, so we will have it for both grades now.
And I think that's a key because we're addressing some of the social emotional learning pieces. We're going to be utilizing our research-based, evidence-based program. We're piloting those programs this year, so that is something that I think we've heard loud and clear that we've got to continue to figure out tier one for everybody, how to address those social emotional needs. So we're excited that advisory can be offered in both seventh and eighth grade throughout the entire year.
Is that taught by counselors?
No, this is actually going to be taught by the core academic teachers who will be trained in the resources as well, and some of whom are piloting right now, so.
Can I question real quick? Can you refresh my memory? I know Spanish is listed up there. What about French?
That always started in the.
That always started.
Yeah, as well as that. So that will be, that will be a change. Music ensembles, we'll have the opportunity to meet daily. If you are in multiple music ensembles, seventh and eighth grade, you, if you're in band and chorus, you won't get six of those. You'll, you'll work out with the music teachers how many days are towards band, how many days are towards chorus, and we also have orchestra in there. But the opportunity would be daily for music ensembles. And that would be happening during our flex period, which is also new, and it's not in the program of studies because it's not a course. But junior high students, seventh and eighth grade students will have a flex every day. So during that time, that is when music ensembles will meet, and the other students will have that time built in to receive help from teachers and do things like that that they might need to do. So that is a change to the schedule, although not a change in program of studies. Senior high updates, so there are a couple courses that we have some name changes and a couple additions to the program of studies. In the math department, integrated math one and integrated math two will replace math strategies. There will be a name change. Instead of algebra three with trig, we are going to call that academic pre-cap, just sort of back to what it actually is, that pre-cap course. English, we will be adding Introduction to Philosophy honors course, and that will replace humanities two. In technology, robotics two will now be titled honors digital design and fabrication, and robotics three is going to be our honors STEM capstone.
And those were suggested by our scheme team because they felt like robotics two didn't really accurately describe the type of work that students were doing in that course. So there is a great deal of fabrication and creation, not just coding robots. So they wanted to be a little bit more global with that piece. And then interestingly, robotics three, and I got a chance to go down and visit at one point when the kiddos were in there for robotics three, they really have a lot of choice and agency in the type of technology education they want to pursue for that capstone. So some may go more towards robotics, while others may go more towards fabrication. So it's really up to students' individual interests and where they may want to go down the road. So they felt that retitling that honors STEM capstone kind of allows for that freedom and flexibility and student agency.
It also sort of unties some of the, you have to take the robotics one to take the robotics two to take the robotics three, and allows a little bit more choice in there for students along the way. And we now have a business department, so that's new this year. So we will have an introduction to business course next year that we will offer as an elective. And then financial literacy, which is currently in the social studies department, will move over to the business department. And that does meet the PT requirement for financial literacy. It will now be a half-credit course, and that will start with next year's sophomores. So we will continue with PRM for everybody above that, all of the graduating courses above our next year's sophomores will continue with the PRM, but then moving forward, everybody will have a financial literacy class.
So we're excited to be able to roll this out. And as Dr. Hauck said, with the financial literacy case in the business department with the introduction to business course, that'll be a semester in length. Ideally, the following year, we'll be able to grow that to maybe an entrepreneurship type of a course. I know other schools you may have seen run coffee shops and different entrepreneurial ventures through the course. So we first need to learn more about business before we jump into that. So we're excited to be able to, down the road, offer a few more courses in a content area that we feel, and we've got data supporting this, many of our students are going into post-secondary majoring in a business field and yet really haven't had any business courses here. So the more we can, you know, hopefully help them to identify whether it's truly an interest and passion and whether they're, you know, adept at it as well, I think is, is a good thing. So we're excited to be able to get this off the ground, but realize we have to take it in steps. So just adding, you know, the intro business course, the financial literacy, again, we had the PRM, we've had academic econ, which is very similar to that. So we're just pulling in everything that the state is saying is required for that course. So we're excited for all of our 10th graders from here forward, you know, to be enrolling in that, in that course. So the graduation requirement that had been personal resource management PRM will be obviously eliminated, and then the financial literacy will become the graduation requirement that the state is mandating as well. So working through that process with the next, over the next year or two, as we graduate people and inherit some of folks. All right, so I think that was where the last slide there. Does anyone else have any other questions regarding these very large changes that we bring to you?
Will that kind of be, I mean, most, I'm thinking mostly of the seventh meeting. Well, that could have been rolled out to parents and the public and students in some way. Yes. You know, the senior high I know has known as much of a change, so.
So we did send out the newsletter, in the November newsletter, which went out at the beginning of the month. All of the changes that we went over here were sent out to parents in that newsletter. So we will continue, and the program of studies will reflect these changes as well.
And then in January, I believe there are course registration information nights, so we'll be meet, you know, offering that to families as well. Our school counselors and teachers meet with our students and make sure to explain to them the program of studies and the expectations. There aren't a lot of free choices for our seventh and eighth graders. Instead, they kind of get exploratory courses in lots of different electives, but those electives, like I said, are being updated, being altered a little bit, and I think are hopefully more high interest for our students too, and relevant. I know we're, we're very excited about the integration of, of research and AI, you know, through that one course. So I think that that's a good thing. But yeah, so there will be over the January, February timeline, that information out for families, those information nights, and then the documents that get sent home as well, so. Any other questions?
I'd like to see what this could be.
Definitely necessary, so. And we do have our current program of studies on the website, so we will be sharing with you, like I said, the document in the Friday update. And then when once approved, we'll be putting that and formatting it appropriately for the website. So if you go on the website now, you can kind of click an area, and there's a plus sign, and then it drops down different content for that particular subject. And so it will be, I guess, formatted in that way on the website, even though the document just has everything there, there are fancy plus signs, you know, because you can't drop down on the document. So just be aware that it's like a lot of pages.
A lot, a lot of pages. Document.
Yes.
Good late night reading.
But it looks very nice on the website because it's a little bit more manipulatable, so.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you. It all sounds great, and especially, you know, good to see that going for the seventh and eighth grade and see that, you know, the increased math and English will hopefully really, hopefully really be helpful, so. Great, thank you so much. Okay, I think that was our overall presentation.
That was. Oh, oh, look at that, there it is.
Oh, there you go.
There's the program sites currently on the website, so as you can see, there's, so the document you'll receive will just, like, lots and lots of pages to it.
Yes, yes.
Apply to the website, then you'll be able to drop down, so.
And be able to scroll through that and see all, yeah.
But I will say there was a very nice article in the Chariot with your interview.
Oh.
I thought that was. To give a heads up for the incoming seventh and eighth grade, I don't know if anybody read it, but it was, I had to pull up real quick. But, um, she was interviewed by my neighbor Avery Hayward, and it's the one missing schedule change. So it was a very nice article.
She was a very good journalist. She ended sweating. I was a little. Yeah, she was great. She did very well.
Yeah.
That's great. Great. Um, so I don't, unless there's anything else, anyone, announcements or otherwise, um, I can entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I would like to ask if this is the shortest meeting in history.
If it is, I'm now.
By asking that, you just made it one. I lost the record.
This is short one. I think we earned this one. Yeah.
I'll make the motion to adjourn. It's the shortest meeting in history. Have all those in favor?
All those opposed? Enjoy your evening. Thank you.